I will now call the regular meeting of the Hazel Park Board of Education to order on this November seventeenth, 2025 at 6:00 PM. Have the roll call, please.
Beaton.
Here.
Becker.
Here.
Fortress.
Fortress.
Fox.
Here.
LaFrenkles.
Here.
Here.
Here. I have everybody stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I need an approval. Can I get an approval for the agenda, please?
I move the Board of Education to accept the agenda as written.
Second.
Sorry. With a correction on the ten twenty twenty-five minutes, there is a section under public comments where it states her instead of him. And it's already been corrected, but I just want this for her. And then I would also like to add an item Q under new business to talk about a cap for Don Silvino.
Can I also add on the open schools? Yeah, a discussion on the open schools that helped me out. What was it?
Enhancement village?
Yes, thank you.
So we're adding a Q and an R? Q R enhancement village. Okay, any discussion about those changes?
So I will add that to my motion then for her discussion of open schools enhancement village.
That's what I was going to ask. Do we have to change the motion?
So random.
Oh, right. The motion is for both.
And I second it.
Okay, now we need discussion about those additions. And the minutes, when did that come up?
It was, it was a.
Big under consent.
But it's still part of our entire agenda, so I just figured I'd put it out there now.
Okay, and the corrections to the minutes.
Was that under public comment?
It was under public comment, yep, on ten twenty twenty-five. It was just a word, but we would like it corrected. From her taking.
Are we ready for roll call?
Yeah.
Everybody?
Yes.
Okay, roll call.
Rettin.
Yes.
Fortress.
Yes.
Beaton.
Yes.
Becker.
Yes.
Fox.
Yes.
LaFrenkles.
Yes.
Hampton.
Yes. Now we have special order of business. The exciting part of the night is the student of the month is first. So you can all go to the front and your name will be read in some beautiful comments.
All right, good evening and welcome, everybody. We're excited to have our students of the month by building. And so we will have you walk up. When your name is called, then you're going to go all the way around the board members and shake their hands. And then you'll come over here for a picture. So we're looking forward to celebrating you. First, we're going to have Webster.
Good evening. I don't see Phoenix. But we're honored.
Do we want to make Webster last?
You want to go down the end?
I can do that.
All right. Well, here we go. We're going with Webb. Webb then.
All right, our student of the month is Liam Hopkins. My first memory of meeting Liam was last year when he came down the fifth grade halls with a friendly hello and a big smile. I'm happy to say not much has changed since then. This is from his teacher, Mrs. Hazen. Liam demonstrates a great work ethic with his class assignments. He volunteers often, works well in small groups, and is helpful with his peers. He's also creative and made a pretty cool Halloween sign for our class door. The most impressive quality, however, is how humble Liam is. He never seeks attention, doesn't brag, and is genuinely kind to his peers. I look forward to all the great things Liam will do in fifth grade. Great job, Liam.
All right, Hoover Elementary would like to honor Scarlett Wrangle. Come on up, Scarlett. Scarlett is a fourth grader in Ms. Johnson's room. And Ms. Johnson always writes an acrostic poem. Scarlett is smart, caring, achiever, rare, likable, empathetic, talented, terrific, respectful, awesome, neighborly, generous, enthusiastic, and lovely. Scarlett is one of those rare people who has the integrity to put her best paw forward simply because it is who she is. She is always being respectful, responsible, and safe, not because she is earning a reward for it, but because it is the right thing to do. Scarlett makes the world a better place with her mindful outlook. Great job, Scarlett.
Hello, Marcus Hewen, fifth grade at United Oaks. Marcus. Ms. Irwin and Ms. Westbury report. Marcus is a quiet leader who shines through his actions and positive attitude. He is a positive addition to United Oaks. During our reading intervention group, he consistently works hard and shows progress. Marcus leads by example. He always demonstrates focus, determination, hard work, and kindness towards others. Always present and engaged, he is inspiring to others through consistent effort and genuine goodness of heart. He, his polite and respectful nature makes him an absolute joy to have at United Oaks. We are so lucky to have Marcus.
Good evening. I am here to present the Jardon Student of the Month, Miracle Miles. Miracle. Miracle is such a bright light in our class. She's always helpful, kind, and cheerful. She is encouraging to her friends. She completes all work tasks and volunteers to help when needed. Miracle is a true asset to our classroom and will be greatly missed when she graduates in the spring.
The Hazel Park Junior High Student of the Month is Melan Evans. Melan Evans is an outstanding young lady and a wonderful example of what it means to be a dedicated patriot. She comes into class every day with a bright smile and a positive attitude that lifts everyone around her. Melan is always respectful to her teachers and classmates, creating a welcoming and kind environment wherever she goes. Her hard work and determination shine through in everything she does. Whether she's completing assignments, participating in class discussions, or helping others, Melan consistently gives her best effort. She sets a great example for her peers through her enthusiasm, responsibility, and positive spirit. Congratulations, Melan, on being named Hazel Park Junior High Student of the Month. Your kindness and commitment make our school a better place every day.
Hazel Park High School would like to recognize Kendall Goodson, who is a dedicated employee and not present tonight, so she is at work. But Kendall is a dependable, hard-working student. She took up saxophone as a brand-new instrument this summer for marching band. And by the end of the season, was one of our strongest marching band musicians on the whole field. She shows fantastic leadership qualities and is a model student for the rest of the band to look up to. We are very lucky to have her, and she is truly deserving of student of the month. Way to go, Kendall.
The Advantage Student of the Month is Erica Seawright. Erica has a pleasant attitude this year, which is a turnaround from previous years. Her teachers report that she has made a complete one-eighty in her work ethic and attitude. On a regular basis, she asks for missing work because she isn't always on time for first hour of class. She produces quality work as she completes quietly and independently. Erica, the Advantage staff is proud of the changes you have made, and we are happy to recognize you as student of the month.
So Enes Abdul-Razak is the student of the month for Invest this month. Enes is the kind of student who makes the whole classroom better. He is always the first to help others and does it with a kind heart and no hesitation. His conduct is excellent, and he works hard in every subject. In English, he is truly a joy to teach. He is a strong thinker and an incredible reader who brings real insights to discussions. Enes is selfless, dependable, and bright, and we are proud to name him student of the month.
So I'm here for Webster's student of the month. Unfortunately, he is not here, Phoenix DaSilva. And Ms. Jenna, his teacher nominated Phoenix as student of the month because she's so impressed by how hard he tries in the classroom. He is kind and caring. If his friends are upset, he is always there to help. He comes into class ready to learn each day and works hard to achieve his goals. Phoenix follows the classroom schedules and enjoys going to gym and STEM. He also helps clean up classroom during the day. If he notices something on the floor, he gets up right away and puts it just where it belongs. Thank you, Phoenix.
Okay, we have one more big round of applause for our great kids here.
We have one more.
Oh, no.
One more, people.
Robinson here? Well, I'm going to read it. Javaz Robertson is Edison Student of the Month for October. Over the past several years, Javaz has demonstrated remarkable growth in both his behavioral and academic performance. At the beginning of this quarter, he faced some challenges with staying focused and completing assignments on time. He now approaches classroom expectations with maturity and a positive attitude, demonstrating respect towards peers and teachers alike. In addition to his behavioral goal, he has shown a renewed commitment to academic success. He now completes assignments promptly and with care. This improvement not only reflects his growing sense of responsibility, but also serves as a model for classmates. We are proud of his hard work and perseverance. He, he has proven that with determination and the right mindset, meaningful change is possible. We wholeheartedly recommend Javaz for the student of the month and believe this recognition will further encourage his continued growth.
Okay, next we have our junior high representative for report. The next one is our high school representative.
Hello, my name is Preston Blaze. I'm the high school representative for the twenty-five to twenty-six school year. And I'm just going to list off a few points from the past few months. So at the homecoming football game on October tenth, we brought back the iconic Viking float, which was a very great addition to our parade that we had. And we're looking forward to continuing that, or continuing that on for the next few years. Next up, we have the class of twenty-twenty-six senior activities. They've been going quite well with the addition of senior parking spots. This year, we have twenty senior parking spots with all different creative artistic designs. So it's very nice to see that every morning on the way to school. And yeah. Next up, we got marching band made it to state finals at Ford Field and placed ninth place with a score of seventy-four point eight, which I heard ninth is the highest we've ever scored. So great job, marching band. Next up, we got girls volleyball made it to the district championship finals against Ferndale and fell a little short of victory, but they played a great season. They've made fantastic progress over the past few years. So, great job. Next up, we got Hazel Park drama presented Night of the Living Dead during, from October thirtieth to November first. On Halloween, they hosted a free matinee for all the high school students and teachers to come see. And the teachers joined in on the ghoul fun by getting some zombie makeup done by the drama students the morning of the show. So they were all dressed up, which was very fun to see. Football finished their season on Halloween, making it to the semifinals. And they played a great game. They fell a little short, but we're very, we're very proud to see their improvement over the years. They've been doing great. So good job. The National Honor Society hosted its first blood drive of the year with twenty-nine successful donations. The next one is December eighteenth, and I hope to see some of you guys come and donate, so. And but overall, the school spirit has been up, and it's been running very smoothly with the transition from Mrs. McHenry retiring and Mr. Deems taking over. And we're looking forward to the winter sports season with tryouts finishing up this week. That's pretty much it. Thank you.
Preston, Preston, what time is the blood drive, please?
Blood drive, eight to two.
Thank you.
I can send all these.
That was a great report. Thank you.
Thank you.
Advantage representative. Okay, moving on to Invest presentation.
It's Jardon.
Yeah, it says, okay, it says both Jardon, I'm sorry.
Sorry about that.
My son is here to help with the tech crew. All right, my name is Karen Soule. I am one of the student council representative, or sponsors at Jardon. Jody Cox is a teacher at Jardon as well, and she is my partner this year. We are here with some of our student council representatives tonight. Not everybody could make it, but the ones that are here are going to introduce themselves. Not present tonight, Taylor Burns, and she's the student council president. Dorian Warren is the student council vice president. Brianna Lopez is a student council secretary, and Joseph Turner is one of our student council reps. You want to introduce yourself?
Based mother wally. Student. Donald Bennett.
I'm Jody Miller. I'm the treasurer of student council.
Hi, I'm Sharvol Piranet.
I was the bottom.
Joshua Crump. Joshua Crump, your turn first.
Joshua Crump. As mother of the student council, we are the leaders. In our score, we take pride in being.
Being active.
Active.
Participants.
Participants. And many different.
There it is.
Our score.
Nice job. Right, can you click it?
Yeah, yeah.
Guys, can we let Jody up?
The student council at Jardon are planning a few fundraisers this year. We are planning to sell bagels throughout the year. We sell holiday candy grooms in December and Valentine's Day candy grooms in February. The money we will raise will go to the following. Hazel Park Schools canned food drive. Our monthly all-school socials, reducing the cost of our spring dance tickets, raising money to upgrade, update our activity room. This year. This year, Jardon held a nine-eleven moment, never forget memorial service at our flagpole. We had students read about the events that took place on nine-eleven. We raised the flag to half-staff and held a moment of silence.
The student council is also planning Tuesday afternoon socials for the students at Jardon to get together and have some fun. This is where all students are able to, from all the different programs, come together, and we plan different fun activities. We do some outdoor games, crafts, gingerbread houses, popcorn and movies, music and karaoke. We have snowball fights, dance parties, board games, teamwork games. And new this year to Jardon, social afternoons is puppet karaoke, which was a big hit in October.
Yeah, we did have an October.
Yeah.
Every day, student council members are responsible for raising and lowering the American flag. We work as partners and raise the flag before we head out to our job sites and lower it before going home for the day.
The student council is stepping up. Is stepping up its game and taking more responsibility of the Jardon.
Publicity.
Publicity. We, we will be making flyers and social media posts and videos to promote holiday sale in the store slash greenhouse, basketball games, bocce ball games, spring flower sale, job site highlights, classroom highlights, fun night interviews. Follow us on Facebook. Keep your eyes out for exciting stuff coming from Jardon Vocational School. Come check, come check us out in the greenhouse, school store, or at basketball game or bocce ball game.
And that's all. Thank you so much.
Thank you for that report. Wonderful student council that's very busy, and if people haven't been to your store or your games, they should stop, stop in. Good job, guys.
Yes, and we have a sale coming up in December for the greenhouse and the school store, so check us out for some holiday plans and products that are made by the students.
Nice report.
Thank you.
Okay, next we have public comment. I have one person. Ian. Mr. Lloyd. Let me say first, my little comment. This is a business, a Board of Education business meeting and public for the purpose of conducting school district business. And is not to be considered a public community meeting. The board has provided two opportunities during the meeting for the public to address the board respectfully. Personal attacks that are abusive or obscene that disrupts the meeting will be stopped. Rules are on the wall. Please be kind. And no personal comment, please. Say your name and address, and you have five minutes.
Greetings, Ian Lloyd. Nine-nine-two-ee-say-and-easy-hazel-park-Michigan, four-eight-zero-three-zero. I suppose is a. Yeah, so I'm just here. I guess I'm wishing you guys are, you know, like as a board, good luck, you know, you know, there's a lot of. I never realized what a closely related job when you get sworn in using the Constitution. That you guys carry that burden that I felt as a soldier as well. And I want you to know that I have offer gratitude for, for the elected officials and the weights that you carry. And so what I started to do was I tuned in to a few things. I saw that we, we have someone interested in helping us articulate goals from last week, last meeting. I think on the board behind you, I think it was nice to see the vision and the mission. But there should be maybe a countdown clock till you run out of money. I mean, maybe, you know, like forty thousand dollars per month is what we pay in interest, apparently. On the five hundred thousand dollars that we're repaying in a twelve-month calendar year. We refinance the house for raises to administration. We've refinanced the house. I want you guys to know, none of those raises, how could you vote on them? Each one that came before you subsequently in the previous one to two, three years, how did you even know without accurate numbers related to the finances? Then you authorize raises that. And you authorize raises that put us in a, you know, precarious situation, and the only reason you had a chance to do that because someone had a bright idea that we needed to exit from Oakland schools oversight? We're still on emergency loans. I mean, when are you going to replace that five hundred K and put it into instruction? I wanted you guys to know that you're allowed to go through a bankruptcy, and you can restructure, and you can trim certain schools, you can have an articulated plan and use all the proceedings and safety nets and safeguards to preserve our district. Detroit Public Schools is a perfect example of it. They did all their deconstruction costs, wrapped it into their restructuring plan, and had community stakeholder involvement. Before you guys go out and reach for the millage, you know, you can come talk to the public. I'm unclear if you can demonstrate that you did that in your last vote for the millage that you wanted all the seniors to pay for your instant line of credit. We have structural things that need to change. HR doesn't get to make one thirty, I'm sorry, that's, that's unacceptable in Hazel Park, especially with no experience. I'm wondering about the ethics conversations that I've had, did you guys think about those? Did you think about what it looks like to have family members doing all your finances that paid for twice? We paid Plant Moran to do this. You don't think Hazel Park deserves a quality audit? I mean, if you don't want someone to speak about these facts, don't let them become facts. I've requested an investigation into the organization's finances since 2020. There was clear and definite, definitive breaches to our collective agreement. It's okay for you guys to just shrink, and it's okay to get right-sized, and make your, if you made a mistake, you can own up to it. And there's a lot of mistakes, we all have them, but you can't continually make mistakes on the taxpayers' money. Let's say someone wanted, what I got taught, you know, as a federal law enforcement officer, the moment I didn't do something lawful, that's when I'm outside my scope of employment. And all of those fees related to that could be, if there's any investigations or anything, you could actually, you know, need to pay the money back. So I hope you guys use your money wisely. You can't refinance a home twelve months at a, at a calendar year just to pay admin raises. Bring Oakland schools back in here, do it right.
Okay, the next thing is a closed session, can I get a motion to go to closed session?
I move that the Board of Education to recess into closed session, eight eight. Considered to exempt from discussion or disclosure by state or federal statute, and may claim suspension.
Second. Okay, motion by Monica and second by Heidi to go to closed session. Roll call, please.
Bertie?
Yes.
Porter?
Yes.
Eaton?
Yes.
Becker?
Yes.
Fox?
Yes.
The Brown boys?
Yes.
Yes.
Throw some in here too.
We're full of sarcasm.
All right.
Return to open session.
Support.
Debbie, motion to return to open session and who was second?
Heidi.
Heidi was second. On favor?
Aye.
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 Roll call.
I didn't hear all the ayes.
Look around, Wood.
Yes.
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 Aye, I mean yes.
Yes.
Yes, motion carries seven zero. Motion, can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I move the Board of Education accept the consent agenda with the one, the change on ten twenty's minutes to change she or her to him.
Support. Any discussion, oh, support was, sorry, Monica?
Abraham had it.
Abraham. Okay. Any discussion about that? Okay, roll call.
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes. Motion carries seven zero. New business, strategic plan, can I get a motion for the strategic plan?
I move the Board of Education approve the strategic plan for MASB as presented.
Support.
Okay, motion by Heidi, support by Debbie for the MASB strategic plan discussion.
I kind of went through all of them, my only concern, I know the one, the AA one is a little bit more expensive, but it did go along with our Portrait of a Learner. So I'm just wondering, will MASB put that into theirs, does anyone know?
I think we did, I did ask that, or Dr. Wolfcocks asked it and they've worked on a few with Portrait of a Learner.
They have, they have worked with a few people on a Portrait of a Learner, as has M L I, and then obviously A A S A, because that's what they do. But, yes, they've all had, they've not centered it around, you've seen the examples, but they have worked with individuals that are utilizing, that was the words I got, that are utilizing Portrait of a Learner.
And I, two, last Tuesday, they had a new board seminar that was M A S B, Debbie Ster put on for strategic plan and goals, and I thought it kind of went right along with what we were going to make out, and I was impressed with that.
So I watched the meeting when I was gone. It's interesting to watch while it's happening. What I liked about it was really community-based, a lot of, it just felt down-to-earth, common sense, community-based, is what I liked about the M A S B. Any other, anybody else?
I just have a question. I know we discussed this starting in January, but Dr. Wolfcocks mentioned in our last meeting that her staff felt very overwhelmed with our zero-based budgeting process and doing the strategic plan at the same time, and I know it's very important that we have the zero-based budgeting and we have good information to make decisions on. Is there a way that possibly we can start this in April and end it in September, October, versus starting it in January?
If you do that, you will have to start it in the fall. People would not start it into the end of the year and over the summer. That wouldn't be an activity that our teachers and everybody would be a part of. I also, my recommendation was the opposite in Mr. Sovey's presentation. He recommends that all of this be tied to the strategic plan, in which he stated we should have done it in the fall, but unfortunately, we did not. And so my request was, get the strategic plan and the departmental budgeting done, then start this, Mr. Sovey, in June. So he did mention that today in a conversation that he was suggesting to you guys to go ahead and do it afterwards, but that really is not my recommendation. We really need our strategic plan going forward and to get to a potential bond. There's a timeframe issue.
Okay, well, then you're telling me that your staff is okay with doing zero-based budgeting as directed by the board, using Mr. Sovey, and doing strategic plan at the same time? They're not going to be overwhelmed?
Ms. Fortress, my recommendation is that that zero-based budgeting be done in the summertime, because we are still have two business officials that are working through here and know my staff is overwhelmed with that, as well as my staff doing negotiations, as well as the other items that are on, and the strategic plan needs to be done. I'm concerned more about their willingness to participate, given the fact that there's a lot on their plate. They cannot come out of their buildings now to attend our meetings, and that's going to be very difficult, when we have many of the steps in zero-based budgeting already set up. It's more of the looking at those funds and those accounts, which they will have for them by the time we roll around in this week.
Well, the budget's due in June, so starting it next year is pointless. So we're pushing it up. Is there something you need to say? She's shaking her head no, so I'm confused.
Excuse me, I would ask that, under your ethics, that you're respectful to your superintendent? I didn't say anything.
No, you're not shaking your head. The person sitting next to you is shaking their head no, so I was confused. I wasn't curious if you were reading something.
Not sure that we want to call out people at the table. That's not, again, the board makes the decision. Our recommendation is that we wait. You've already approved, Mr. Sovey, that's not what's on the table. The strategic plan will have to be rebid out, because it might be changed in the dollars in the meantime.
Then we'll move forward as is. I'm just trying to be courteous of your staff.
Yeah, I think that we need to vote, and I think we need to stay with the original that we were going to hire somebody and we were going to start this, so. Anybody, roll call?
Sorry, Fortress?
Yes.
The front ones?
Yes.
Beaton?
Yes.
Becker?
Yes.
Fox?
Yes.
Rittie?
Yes.
Hinton?
Yes, motion carries seven zero. Next on the agenda is the cybersecurity assessment.
I move the Board of Education approve the I T risk assessment and an amount not to exceed $10,000 as presented.
Support, second, sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry, I was looking for it. Monica, motion, and Heidi, second. Discussion.
There is no new discussion since the last meeting, unless anyone has questions. Yeah, unless you have questions.
Roll call, please.
Rittie?
Yes.
Fortress?
Yes.
Beaton?
No.
Becker?
Yes.
Fox?
Yes.
The front ones?
Yes.
Yes, six of my motion carries. Is the new one the Webb Edison swipe? Wasn't there a new one?
That is the new one.
Okay, okay, because that wasn't discussed
No.
last week, so I made a motion.
I move the Board of Education approve the proposal of stored access installation at the Webb Staff Lounge and the Edison May Office at the cost not to exceed $6,870.
Support.
Motion by Heidi, support by Monica. Any discussion?
No, just briefly, since we didn't, we had one that was broken at Edison. At the same time, there's some concern about how the staff lounge goes into the library, so for safety purposes, we thought instead of having different keys, that it would be better just to have a swipe. It came over the $5,000 amount, which then I apologize for not getting this to you last week, but we got it at the end of the week, and thus I asked President Hinton for the ability to give it on.
Are these in other buildings?
Yes, that's what you swipe in with.
Oh, okay.
Yep.
Was the question? Yeah, I have a question. Was the Edison one damaged by student, or was it just not working? We don't want to know.
I know, I know.
Do you know? Okay.
I'd be happy to chat with you about that.
Okay, okay, because I just was curious.
If we have them in all the staff lounges?
They're not in all the staff lounges, but the other staff lounges don't open up into a classroom of kids.
Oh.
So that's the difference, because normally, right there in a, so that staff lounge goes right through to the library, and so kids can bounce in there, but also, you know, it's not a lot safe area.
I think that one's an important one to have.
Yeah, there felt, actually, the, one of the teachers wanted to come and speak tonight because they feel so unsafe, and I said I couldn't imagine that we're not voting yes for this.
Thank you.
Okay, roll call.
Fortress?
Yes.
Rittie?
Yes.
Beaton? Yes.
Becker?
Yes.
Fox?
Yes.
The front ones?
Yes.
Yes, motion carries six zero. Thirty-one double A, resolution.
I move the Board of Education approve thirty-one A A resolution as presented.
Second.
Motion by Monica, second by Heidi, any discussion?
Do you want me to read it first?
We need to do the, yes, read the.
All right, buckle up.
She's not that proud.
Grab a beverage, sit down for a minute. A regular meeting of the Board of Education of Hazel Park Schools was held at sixteen twenty East Elza, Hazel Park, on November seventeenth, two thousand twenty-five, at six P M. Meeting was called to order by President Hinton. The following preamble and resolution were offered by member Rittie and supported by member Fortress. Okay, that part's not different, all right. Whereas the Michigan Legislature enacted as part of the twenty-five, twenty-six state aid school appropriate, state school aid appropriations bill, Michigan Public Act fifteen of two thousand twenty-five, certain amendments to section thirty-one double A, M C L three eighty-eight point one six thirty-one double A, the State School Aid Act, that appropriates money to support school safety and mental health. Whereas the school district desires to apply for the section thirty-one double A money in a form and manner prescribed by the Michigan Department of Education. Whereas to receive funding under section thirty-one A of the act, the school district must affirmatively agree to waive any privilege that may otherwise protect information from disclosure in the event of a mass casualty event, as defined in section thirty-one double A of the act, and must agree to comply with the comprehensive investigation, as defined in section thirty-one double A of the act, for a period that consistent with thirty-one A sixteen would apply for the fiscal year in which eligibility was determined, two thousand twenty-six, plus two additional fiscal years beyond that fiscal year, thus ending two thousand twenty-eight. Whereas one of the privileges that may be invoked in connection with a comprehensive investigation is attorney-client privilege, and only the board can effectively waive attorney-client privilege on behalf of the school district. Therefore, it is hereby resolved that the board hereby waives any privilege, including attorney-client privilege, only on behalf of the school district for the sole and express purpose of applying for and receiving section thirty-one double A funds appropriated for the fiscal two thousand twenty-six funding year under the act. Provided, however, such waiver is limited only to I, a privilege that could be exercised by the board solely on behalf of the school district, only in the event of a comprehensive investigation initiated by the governor in response to a mass casualty event, as defined in section thirty-one double A of the act. And double I, a mass casualty event is defined in the act that occurs during the funding years when the school district receives and expends the section thirty-one double A funds appropriated under the act or as part of the fiscal two thousand twenty-six funding year. In any case, the waiver of privilege provided by this resolution shall not extend beyond September thirtieth, two thousand twenty-eight.
Okay, now, any discussion? All right, hearing none. Let's see, we need, oh, roll call, please.
Fortress? I'm sorry, Rittie?
Yes.
Fortress?
Yes.
Yes.
Becker?
Yes.
Fox?
Yes.
The front ones?
Yes.
Yes, motion carries six to zero. The next is the arrow filter replacement, it's going to have a motion.
I move the Board of Education approve the district filter order and the amount of five thousand two hundred fifty dollars and thirty-six cents as presented. Support.
Motion by Heidi, support by Monica. Is there any discussion?
I asked a question last Monday, if we bought all, there was a discussion about, we change the filters three to four times a year, if we bought them in bulk, if there was a discount.
Actually, it's three times a year, and Greg said that that would cause too much of a storage issue and concern about the filters that we have, so it was not his recommendation to go forward on that.
Thank you.
Okay, roll call now.
Fortress?
Yes.
Rittie?
Yes.
Beaton?
Yes.
Becker?
Yes.
Fox?
Yes.
The front ones?
Yes.
Yes, motion carries seven zero. Any, can I get a motion for the purchase of the snowplow?
I move the Board of Education approve the purchase of a boss snowplow, a cost not to exceed eight thousand four hundred and seventy-three dollars, to be funded through the district general fund as presented.
Is there a second?
Support.
Okay, motion by Monica, support by April, any discussion on the snowplow? Okay, roll call.
Rittie?
Yes.
Beaton?
Yes.
Becker?
Yes.
Fortress?
No.
Fox? Yes.
The front ones?
No.
Hinton?
No, motion carries four to three. It's sinking fund approvals. Can I get a motion?
I move the Board of Education to solicit projects and authorize the administration to move forward with scheduling.
Second.
Any motion by Monica, and second by Heidi? Any discussion?
Just to remind you that this is approval for the R F Ps, this isn't approval to correct them, so then, or complete them, so you'll have an opportunity to get the R F Ps next month in January, make a determination from there if you want to move forward right, and you'll look at the bids.
I just want to clarify, this is coming from the sinking fund, not the general fund, correct?
This is sinking fund.
Because it says on here funding source, general fund, so I just wanted to.
Oh, it did not get changed, I apologize.
Can we just talk about, so the public's aware
Sure.
what they are. It's renovations to the bathrooms at Advantage and Webb Hoover Playground upgrade, upgrades to the Hazel Park High School welding room, and United Oaks carpet replacement.
Just on the floors, not on the rooms. And just one set of bathrooms at Advantage and Webb, we couldn't
Do them all.
Do them all, one at a time. This doesn't mean that there's not other projects we'll be doing with the sinking fund, these are the ones that we need to get out ahead and get bid and squared away financially.
Thank you. You answered my question. Did you jump in there?
I was going to ask if this is just for the R F Ps or if it's for the, but you got it.
Okay, roll call, please.
Rittie?
Yes.
Fortress?
Yes.
Beaton?
Yes.
Becker?
Yes.
Fox?
Yes.
The front ones?
Yes.
Yes, motion carries seven zero. Moving on to the trip, the Toledo Art Museum trip. Can I have a motion?
I move the Board of Education approve the trip to the Toledo Art Museum as presented.
Second.
Okay, motion by Monica, second by Heidi. Discussion, hearing none, roll call.
Rittie?
Yes.
Fortress?
Yes.
Beaton? Yes.
Becker? Yes.
Fox?
Yes.
The front ones?
Yes.
Yes, motion carries seven zero. We have the A P course approval.
I move the Board of Education approve that pre-A P algebra one and A P pre-calculus courses for implementation in the two thousand twenty-six, two thousand twenty-seven academic year.
Second.
Motion by Monica, second by Heidi for the A P course approval, any further discussion? Okay, roll call.
Rittie?
Yes.
Fortress?
Yes.
Beaton?
Yes.
Becker? Fox?
Yes.
The front ones?
Yes.
Yes, motion carries seven zero. Next is the H P course handbook.
I move the Board of Education approve the eight Hazel Park High School handbook revision as presented.
Support.
Motion by Heidi, support by Monica, to approve the H P course handbook. There was a lot of talk about how beautiful it was, I'd like to see it.
They did a wonderful
Very nice, I heard.
Very strong, is it okay if I?
Yes, please.
Yes, they, it was a wonderful collaborative project that they did with multiple people in the building, as well as a consultant from the I S D, and it's a strong tool, not just a course catalog, but also something that really can help kids and families understand the pathways at Hazel Park. In addition, this is just going to be Hazel Park High Schools, and then after this, we are going to duplicate this, because the courses are the same for our alternative settings, so there will be one that represents our traditional high school as well as our after year. They do have to talk about one change in there, I wanted to make sure. It's really a minor change, but when they, when I brought it to the board last week, the same, the same course overview was for two C T E course courses, they just corrected it, so they're not appropriate. So no minor change, or no major change, just minor.
So this version of it is the correct version that's in our board book now?
I do not believe so, because I've just gotten these changes, so I will get that set. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Domage. Roll call.
Fortress?
Yes.
Yes.
Beaton? Yes.
Becker? Fox?
Yes.
The front ones?
Yes.
Yes, motion carries seven zero. After-school security. Motion?
I move the Board of Education approve the hiring of two additional part-time security guards for Hazel Park High School and Hazel Park Junior High as presented.
Support.
A motion by April, support by Monica, to hire the security, and that's something that's new on the agenda. Discussion?
I'm just here, is this, are we hiring two new people? Are we using current ones to fill this for after-school time?
Our staff usually has the ability to do it if they want, but the purpose of this would be to no longer have open and unlocked doors. We made this request last year about this time, so I think we maybe confused the longfellow conversation with remembering this. Right now, we're locked all day long, and then you open it up and kids can go just into the school anywhere, people can come anywhere at night. This way, the person will be at the door, we'll have the metal detector, and that person will be checking them in. When the kids after school go outside, they would come back in, so from three until an event was done that evening. Our people might request to do it, but we may find someone that's really interested in some kind of part-time work that can do that check in.
Are we fully staffed on all security positions in the district already?
We certainly are not.
So I question whether or not these two positions are going to be filled, if we can't even have a full staff in our schools now.
Well, I'm more concerned about the fact that we'd have it out there in safety for our children, because the doors are left unlocked at both the junior high and high school undone. our children because the doors are left unlocked at both the junior high and high school undone. And, um, so will we, I, I think some of our staff may be willing to do it, but I think we should, we might get somebody that wants to do it in the evenings, part-time, to be at that door. It's pretty simple. You let them in and, um, we'll put a little desk there and, and check it through.
Is there, um, a metal detector at the junior high?
There is not, but there'll be probably a discussion next month. Um, there's been some requests from me about a metal detector here for safety as well as a reserve police officer and, um, a metal detector at the junior high. We've not had that conversation yet with the junior high.
So what I'm concerned, what my question, I guess, is the person is sitting there and somebody comes through there with a weapon that they shouldn't have. Say, I'm doing that job. I want to do that job. Is that person going to be, what are they going to do? Are they going to be brave enough to take that weapon? Do they call 911?
They'll hit alert on their button. The, the stuff will go off, it'll be loud, and that person's probably going to run.
And?
The same way if during the school day, you come in through a door and there's a weapon and our peros, our security guards are standing there right now.
When we have our plays of band concerts, will every citizen have to walk through those metal detectors?
Yes.
Same as they do for sporting events.
At other places.
We walk through metal detectors for those.
Yes. I don't.
I'm not a fan of metal detectors, and I, it's a false security, and Oxford wanted nothing to do with metal detectors. Um, I have the whole article from there because the lady in Detroit, she just went through a metal detector with a knife, and the person working there didn't do anything, and she passed the knife to her daughter who stabbed another girl. So it's false security. That person has to be, have enough guts to do something if that person comes with a weapon. And, um, I also learned the gates were taken down at the high school, so when people come in there, they can wander through the whole building, they can go anywhere. And so, once they get let in the door, who's going to watch that they don't go down the hallway and vandalize or something? I just.
We do have the security, and I did have the gates in my weekly update, uh, and why that was done and why it had to be done for fire safety reason. We have, uh, three quotes for doors that we'll bring to you next month to take a look at. Um, I mentioned that I would talk about that in the Committee of the Hall, so we do have quotes for doors for going down into the athletic area and also going into the school building there, much like what we did in the cafeteria. Um, but unfortunately, if anything would happen in the meantime and you left those up, you'd be liable. They were told by fire marshals as well as our architect.
So, so what happens now at a drama or music event?
Nothing. The doors are unlocked.
Doors are unlocked.
And everybody walks in.
So is this particular person going to be stationed at the front of the building or at the back of the building? How are people going to know what door to access?
Well, we'll communicate that. That's where we, they've been coming in is that back doorway now. So, um, they will come in the back. But you do have a metal detector if you really wanted to in the front as well. So we have one in the front, one in the back. Soon we'll have two in the back, um, where they can come through.
Okay, anybody else? No. Okay, uh, roll call. Eaton?
Yes.
Rattie?
Yes.
Becker?
Yes.
Fortress?
I just feel that, you know, on sporting events and stuff, we have security already there, and we do have people sitting at the, um, at the desk already, at the, metal detector already. And I understand that, you know, the door's open now, but if it's, the kids are coming in and out, there should be nobody in the building, and the people that are in the building should enforce it and have them leave. And if they're there for basketball, football, cheer, or whatever, they should be with their coach. So with that being said, I'm a no.
Fox?
Uh, yes.
LeFrencky?
No.
Hinton?
No.
Four to three, motion carries. Uh, let's see, we have board training.
I move the Board of Education approve the board training as presented.
Second. Okay, a motion to approve the board training. I believe that's probably my monthly, open for schools.
It is.
Is there any discussion on that? Um, I didn't get, who, who motion? Heidi?
I motion.
Monica motion? Okay. Any discussion? Okay, roll call.
Rattie?
Yes.
Fortress?
Yes.
Eaton?
Yes.
Becker?
Yes.
Fox?
Yes.
LeFrencky?
Yes.
Yes, motion carries seven, zero. Next, we have board member conference reimbursement. So, if motion?
I move the Board of Education approve the expense reimbursement for the 2025 Leadership Conference as presented.
Is there a second? Second. Okay, motion by Monica, second by Heidi. Any discussion?
I thought we already approved this.
Well, um, our practice was to bring it back for final approval when it was submitted. The board certainly could look at the policies moving forward, do not do that if you wish, but it also is transparent to the community about what was actually spent.
So do we get them for everybody then? Because I've asked for them when things are ran through payroll.
They are, uh, yes, they are.
To see them and we never.
And they're on your credit cards. You certainly, as a board, can choose to change that practice. Board members are a little different than staff members.
And recall, I mean, recall, oh my gosh.
Please.
Oh, my, what a big mistake. Roll call.
Rattie?
Yes.
Fortress?
Yes.
Eaton?
Yes.
Becker?
Yes.
Fox?
Yes.
LeFrencky?
I think I have to abstain.
Oh, yes. Okay, six. The one abstaining.
You have to have that.
Seven.
You have to say yes.
Oh, yes, yes. Number six.
She's still, she's still up on the word.
She's still up on my. Uh, let's see, next, conference request over $500. And motion?
I move the Board of Education approve the conference request over $500 as presented.
Support.
Motion by Monica, support by Nate. Any discussion on this?
Just a reminder that this is all covered by a grant with a wonderful opportunity for our social studies teachers to be able to travel to a conference in Washington, DC. All expenses paid, not by the school.
That's amazing.
That's great.
I'm excited for them.
Okay, roll call.
Yes.
Becker?
Yes.
Yes.
Fortress?
Yes.
Fox?
Yes.
LeFrencky?
Yes.
Uh, yes, motion carries seven, zero. Next is readmission of students. Any motion?
I move the Board of Education approve the readmission of the students as presented.
Support.
Motion by Monica, support by Nate to re-admit students. Roll call.
Rattie?
Yes.
Becker?
Yes.
Eaton?
Yes.
Fortress?
Yes.
Fox?
Yes.
LeFrencky?
Yes.
Hinton?
Uh, yes, motion carries seven, zero. Student discipline action item.
I move the Board of Education approve the student discipline as presented.
Second. Support by Monica, second by Heidi. Can I have a roll call, please?
Rattie?
Yes.
Fortress?
Yes.
Eaton?
Yes.
Becker?
Yes.
Fox?
Yes.
LeFrencky?
Yes.
Uh, yes, motion carries seven, zero. Now we have the superintendent's report, Dr. Wood.
We have two, we have two. We have two other things.
I wrote it on the other agenda. Let's just write it on the.
I almost forgot to, I was getting ready.
But you know, one, okay. Q is?
For Don Sovee. So I move the Board of Education to put a cap of $50,000 on Don Sovee's work and revisit the topic when it hits that amount.
Say it again.
I move the Board of Education to put a cap of $50,000 on Don Sovee's work and have the board revisit the topic when it hits that amount.
Support.
Okay, motion by Monica, support by April, the cap on, uh, Don Sovee's, um, program at $50,000 and to be revisited. Any discussion?
I'm just, in the original motion, and I don't remember, and I didn't look because it just came up. Didn't we cap it at 55 in the original motion?
We did not cap anything. That's why I wanted to do this.
Okay. I thought we kept it.
I don't want to have it open-ended.
So we wanted not to exceed on his current agreement.
Correct. And then we'll revisit once it hits the 50.
I thought we had capped it too, but that's fine. Any other comments?
I would at least like $75,000.
Don Sovee himself said that he expected it to take about $54,000, uh, so, given that on his, oh, I'm, I'm still talking. Given that on his original engagement letter, um, he was given it not to exceed and willingly exceeded it, I see no reason to give him an additional $20,000, $20,000 over what he quoted us. We can revisit him at 50. There's no problem with that.
Um, he exceeded it by $3,000, and, um.
Yeah, he exceeded.
It sounds like people on this area do not want to cooperate with him and take his advice and work with him to get us the material and get us on financial stability and get us a good budget and where everybody in the district knows and the transparency involved in it. So I guarantee we are going to go over the $50,000 because no one seems to want to work with him.
Then we can revisit it at $50,000. If he thinks that he's going to go over and above his own work estimate.
I'd love to have a meeting with Mrs. Fortress and Mrs. Rattie about who's not working with him because we've attended every single meeting, working with him, and then some. So, and responded very promptly in the time period that he's requesting.
My only concern with this was we had a blank check currently. I wanted it to not be a blank check. When it hits 50, we can talk. We're not saying it's not going to be able to go further, but when it hits 50, I would like to talk, I'd like to see the work that was done and go forward. The plan was for him, he said around 50. I have the original time we talked to him on the Zoom, and he said around 50, so that's what I'd like to leave it at for now, and we can revisit it. It's open-ended to revisit.
Okay. I have a quick question. Somebody said, did you say $54,000?
I think you said no. I, I'd have to look at, at the actual video to say it, but when we asked him questions when he was here to present, I think that he said he expected it to be around 54 because of administrative assistant costs. I mean, if, if we're more comfortable going to 54, I guess that's one thing, but 75 is way too high. I was going to say 55.
I would like to leave it at 50 for now, only because there was already another item being asked to be put in here too and be paid for. I'd like to leave it at 50. We can revisit it then, we can see what he needs, we can go back and forth. It was a revisit, it's, it's open to revisit.
And what was the other item that was on here that?
Um, our projections, it's not on this, but we got sent to us, and we also got an email showing that this has already been done up until 2029, so I'm not sure whether we're spending more money on doing it again.
I think it's fine to revisit it. I, I don't see that's a problem.
I, I agree. I mean, all of our agenda items that we have, the, uh, the administration presents to us, we asked them to put caps on things, so not to exceed. I don't think there's a problem with this, and we can easily revisit it if it's, uh, you know, something that we, they need to spend more money.
Okay.
Put the vote.
Roll call. Yeah, let's look at the roll calls.
Rattie?
Yes.
Eaton?
Yes.
Becker?
Yes.
Fortress?
No.
Fox?
Yes.
LeFrencky?
Yes.
Hinton?
Uh, yes. Six to one, motion carries. Our enhancement millage.
Um, I make a motion to discuss the enhancement millage with Oakland's, the ISD.
Support.
There was a news article last week about a board member in Rochester getting census because she talked about this enhancement millage, which is, um, a proposal that Oakland, the ISD is wanting to put on a ballot. What I understand is it's a flow-through, and I'm wondering why our board never discussed it or talked about it, or how, or, I know they've already asked to come back with a response, yes or no, and what our response was to that.
We talked about the enhancement millage when Catherine Cost was here as the interim superintendent. We did. She brought it to our attention at least twice.
Um, so this is not, uh, a vote by Oakland Schools. Um, an enhancement millage, uh, the first step you do is bring the option to the board, and the board votes about whether or not you even want to put enhancement millage on the table. Um, and so that is a discussion. Both Macomb and Wayne have enhancement millages and are far exceeding our ability to pay teachers. Um, you know, enhancement millage works on a balance of the haves and have-nots, kinda. As Hazel Park, you would get a little extra money. The other ones would get a little less. There's been no decisions that have been made. I wasn't at the last meeting, so I can't tell you if there was any conversation at that point in time or not. I was visiting my grandson for his birthday. But it was not brought to you. It was discussed briefly with President Hitten that it was out there. But I did not choose to make that a conversation there because it would come back to you guys to vote. And that's what I'm waiting for, for it to come back to you to vote.
Well, I think that was already, that was discussed that the decision already had to be made by now.
No, a decision has not been made. And the first step is that it comes to you as a board to decide whether you want the community to decide if they want. It's kind of like the bond, right?
Yeah.
You make a decision about whether you want a bond and you'll get a presentation or whatever if that comes your way. And this was discussed several years ago. Some of you went with hmm. Maybe none of you went with me at that point in time, but some of our old members went with us that was Bloomfield. There was a meeting with Union and everyone there. But I was not here at the last meeting, so I did not have one-on-one private conversations with the board.
So if it was voted on yesterday, when is it, when does it come?
I don't know. I can't answer that. I wasn't at the meetings. And I was gone for the whole year last year in the time period. They started working out in January and Mrs. Cost attended several meetings for that. I did not.
So from watching that school, reading the newspaper, it would be, it would come on the ballot in August of 2026. And boards were supposed to let Oakland School know in October if they thought it would be good for their community. And that's, you know, what I've read and what I've listened to. But it's not until later summer 2026 is what they said. So I guess we need to look more into it.
That's what I, that too, Beth. So that I was wanting to know about the October date.
I don't believe that October date to be true, but.
Okay.
I was not there.
Can we just get, but you weren't there, but.
I wasn't there, but if there was discussion in a superintendent's meeting, a board of education would not be privy to a superintendent's meeting conversation.
Well, if they were asking a superintendent to come back and ask their board, we wouldn't know the conversation. It would just be a request to come back and ask. So before October, they must not have asked you to come back to them with a decision.
I certainly, when I have my next superintendent meeting, will update you on anything that I can give to you. But at this point in time, I was not present at that meeting.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you. All right. Now, where are we up to? Superintendent report, enrollment fundraisers, ADK grant donation to Longfellow.
Okay. So pretty excited about our November winners for ADK grant winner. Kim Blumpke got Big Wheels for adapted PE class. I can't wait to see that. Looks fun. And Kimberly Denali got books for individual reading for her class. So lots of fun. Congratulations on these teachers receiving the monthly grant awards for the 2526 school year from the Hazel Park chapter of ADK MU. These teachers will receive $50 to put towards their classroom. So that's pretty exciting. A reminder that we have holiday baskets. The application is through December 1st at 3:00 PM. If you live in the Hazel Park, Ferndale, Hazel Park Schools catchment area, then you are more than welcome to submit a holiday basket application. You can get those at any of your schools and you can also come up to the board office. We have a canned food drive to supply those holiday baskets and potatoes at Web and Jardon, stuffing at Hazel Park Junior High, vegetables at UO and Hazel Park High School. That would be canned vegetables, please. Canned fruit at Webster and Edison, cereal at Hoover. An advantage aboard is mac and cheese and PB and J. I encourage all of you guys to give if you have an opportunity. The teacher of the year announcement is on our website. So if you would like to nominate an incredible teacher in Hazel Park Schools, we encourage you to do so. We will nominate an elementary, a middle school and high school teacher to try to see if we can't catch one of those teachers of the year. Of course, we think all of our teachers are teachers of the year. The school board, many of you will attend December 17th, 2025 at 6:00 PM at Oakland Schools. A dinner and combined conversation with superintendents at that point in time. We also have the Build Up the Park event, November 20th at United Oaks. This is titled Dinner and Data and is going to focus on math data and how it connects to student growth. Our presenter, Tina Sefarian, will guide families through understanding iReady data, what it means for us as educators and for parents learning at home. The event flyer has a QR code that allows early access to each student's iReady data so parents can follow along with the discussion. There's dinner from 5:30 to 6:00, a presentation from 6:00 to 7:00, childcare so parents can fully engage, and 4D turkeys and food boxes for the first families who sign up, come and attend the entire event. On December 2nd, we have the opening of Longfellow at 6 o'clock. We encourage you all to join us. Then October 3rd, we have our post-secondary night. We are so excited to present to our kids December 3rd from 6:00 to 8:00 to present to our students the various programs that they can go to, such as early middle college, firefighting academy. Promiso will be there to talk about some of the changes in the awards that they're able to do to our staff. So it should be a great night. I hope you all consider attending. Pretty impressed and I've heard there's some kids excited too. On December 7th, we will have the senior concert at the junior high from 2:00 to 4:00. So encouraging you guys to come and join us and celebrate with our seniors, great memories and a fun night. We also had a furniture donation that occurred for Longfellow. And if you have any businesses or anyone along the way that's looking for, to get rid of racks, hanging items, hanging closets, furniture, if you're looking at getting rid of that office style because we do need to have office style furniture, not like couches from our homes, let us know. Mrs. Gressley would love to have those items.
I have one thing on your fundraisers. I know it's probably a typo, but it says Jingle Job fundraiser. It's Jingle Jog.
And we're super excited to have that jogging fundraiser. Those are fun for the kids, healthy for the kids, goes along with our wellness and a whole lot of fun. I might be jogging with them.
So was that furniture donated to Longfellow or was it multiple schools?
That was donated to Longfellow.
Okay. Was there another one for multiple schools?
So the P2P program was not refunded?
Oh, that was, yes, yes.
Okay.
So those desks will stay in those schools.
Oh, nice. Okay.
Is that P2P? Is that a good turkey dinner? Is that Hoover? Yeah, that's incredible.
Yes, and they haven't sent me the company yet. They were supposed to so that I could bring a letter to you guys to thank them in kind. So yes, Hoover, everybody received a free turkey dinner and our P2P worker who's been fantastic had it donated for us. The P2P workers are a huge loss. P2P workers came from the county to help work on attendance. It linked us to the county so that we could see and work with families that were involved in truancy. They were not funded, so unfortunately that's a loss to us. We've had them the whole time we've here. They're great.
All right. Did you miss enrollment? Did you start in the middle?
No, I didn't put enrollment in this month.
It's just on the paper?
Yes.
With fundraisers and Monica mentioned the one, but okay.
Any questions you have for me?
Can we do that after closed session at the end?
Sure.
Board member administration comments, questions at the end? Okay, we need a motion to go into closed session.
Motion to go into closed session for A.C. strategy negotiations with collective bargaining agreements.
Motion by Debbie to support my name to go into closed session. Rock call.
I was late. Yes.
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 Yes, motion carries seven zero.
Do you come back to regular meeting?
I'll make the motion to come back to open session.
Support.
Motion by Debbie, supported by April to come back to our open meeting. Rock call.
With, with our votes?
Yes.
Eadie?
Yes.
Yes.
Fortis?
Yes.
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 Uh, yes. Motion carries seven zero. Request for future agenda items. Anybody have any? No. No? Calendar dates?
Remember, our next meeting will be December 1st. Mr. Sobi will be presenting at that meeting for 30 minutes, he said, which will be the outcome of the teachers and administrators that have been invited for that day to come. And then you will get a student system of support presentation from Dr. Papazian, Dr. Domich and Mrs. Gressley, as well as a safety conversation in closed session.
Thanks. Okay, next is public comment. And there isn't anyone here, so we'll move on to board member and administration comments.
If you don't mind, I'll start. I want to say congratulations to all the students of the month. Again, I love this every month. I know Preston talked a lot about the high school. It was great to hear from him. He always seems to give just the right amount of information to us. And I'm also super excited for winter sports. I was over at the high school earlier and I saw Sideline had over 30 cheerleaders and then the competitive also had a bunch of cheerleaders. So that was super awesome to see so many girls coming out. I want to say congratulations to the dancers. They had their first dance competition yesterday all the way out in Lake Orion. They did awesome. And then they have their first home competition, December 6. And the only other thing we kind of talked about when we were talking about Don Sobi setting up a meeting, I would like to set up something with Heidi and Dr. Wilcox Knight and Don Sobi if possible. Forgot about that.
So can we do that on the first, if I was here?
No, we have a full day with staff and with administrators. So two different meetings with administrators, then staff. And he has to have time in between there to get his presentation ready.
I mean, I can find with Zoom or something, but.
Yeah, I'll reach out to you guys and find a time that works on your schedule and then work on his.
Debbie, you have anything?
Just a couple of things. I meant to mention last week and I didn't. I went to the play. It was phenomenal. The special effects were fabulous and I don't even like scary movies and I think that was the best play they did. So I really enjoyed that. Congratulations to the marching band.